Item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knob?
Here.
Chantet? Chantet? Baron? Baron?
She's not here.
She's absent.
Yeah, she'll be absent.
I was listening in because she, as when you're out of town on vacation.
Oh, okay. Good to know. Wolf?
Unless she's... Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Euer? Euer? Serone?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
We have eleven out of fourteen.
Okay. All right. Item number two is a reminder to please speak directly into your microphone for the BATV recording, and then we'll move right on to item number three, which is items that were removed or changed. Do we have anything tonight?
No. No, nothing to be changed.
All right. Thank you. Next up is item number four, which is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Nobody online for that tonight?
No.
Okay. And I think we will... Have anybody here? And then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item A is approval of the Cow Executive Minutes from January twelfth, 2021, and B, Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-seven R, authorizing execution of a one-year renewable contract with Shamrock Hardscapes and Restoration for Westside Property Maintenance. Any questions or comments on any of that?
Still moved?
Second? Motion by O'Brien, second by Rosado. Roll call, please.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer? Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knob?
Aye.
Chantet? Baron, absent. And Wolf?
Aye.
Motion carried, eleven to zero.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next up will be item number six, a discussion on status and report on probationary police officer hiring process. Chief Fuel, are you here?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me, Alderman?
Yep. Loud and clear.
Okay, yes. Mayor Shelkey asked me to give a brief synopsis to the Joint Committee on our selection and retention status currently. Right now, we have one vacancy in the department active since January retirement of John Lambert. Right now, our succession plan is looking like we could potentially have two to four additional attritions this year due to retirement or departure before January first of 2022. Our Board of Fire Police is currently reviewing background investigations and preparing to have three to five interviews at their regular April meeting on April sixth. We've been having a little bit of a difficult time finding interested applicants on our current list. Some of them are basing it on the current climate with the situation with law enforcement nationwide, and even our current sworn candidates from other departments are reluctant to make the move right now just based on more than likely the economic situation, that they're concerned if they leave their agency that they're currently in, and they come to us, they may lose their job in the reduction of force or something like that. So we haven't had great luck finding people who are terribly interested right now. Usually, we would interview between six and seven candidates, and right now, we're down to three, and hoping to get one more before the April sixth, and the background takes a while. So the current situation or status on our academy space, because we are looking at conventional candidates right now who have no prior certification, because of the COVID pandemic and the executive orders and restrictions on schools, and those have an effect on the basic academies as well, we don't have an assigned dedicated seat in any of the basic academies until November of this year. We're on a bunch of wait lists. We're on several wait lists in May and June, August and September, but right now, our only dedicated space is November, and it's not an academy we typically use. Typically, we use the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy at the College of New Page. This one is for the Cook County Sheriff's Police Academy at Triton College in River Grove. So we haven't used that academy in many years, but we secured that seat just in case. We can't get any other seat space before that. We do have multiple seats dedicated for us in 2022. We have four seats dedicated in the first quarter of next year, so things should open up a little bit after that, and we're hoping that as the COVID restrictions ease, and they can expand the size of the academy classes and maybe have additional academy classes, because, you know, we are one of many agencies in Northern Illinois that are really struggling to hire and get people to the basic academy. Right now, as a... So because we're trying to cast the widest net to find ways to bring people into the organization, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners is researching the idea of creating a secondary list for certified candidates only. It would essentially, and it's currently contained in state statute, the municipal code, so they are within their authority to do that, and essentially, it would be a kind of a streamlined hiring process just for certified candidates, so wouldn't have to go through every step of the pre-hiring process that a normal conventional candidate would go through. So basic requirements that they would have a certification, training and standards board certification as a law enforcement officer, and at least two years of full-time creditable service with another agency. So we do have the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, General Counsel researching that, and they are going to weigh in on that during their April meeting as well. So what our major concern is right now is that if we find a suitable candidate at the April meeting and go through the precondition offer, we're not going to have anywhere to send them to basic academy until November. So we're trying to figure out a way to fill that gap between the time we might hire them in April or May, and assuming we're not going to, worst case scenario, we're not going to get an academy space until November. One of the ideas that I've discussed with Laura Newman is potentially hiring a new probationary officer in a temporary capacity as a community service officer, so we could fill that void between the time we hire them and the time we send them to the basic academy, because of the concern is that the candidates that are on our list are more than likely on other lists as well. That's just how this goes when people are trying to break into the career field. They don't take one test, they take a number of tests. So we'd like to have a job to offer them between the time we hire them and get them to the basic academy, because we just let them sit and tell them we have, we'll call them when the academies open up, they may be gone by that time. So that's something we have, we're looking to do potentially in the future. Now, obviously, we don't have the second CSO position authorized in our 2021 budget, but we do have that sworn officer position. Obviously, we could cost savings there, even if we hired him as a CSO, and many of the things that we would do early in our field training process are things we could tackle with a new hire in that community service officer capacity. They could learn our ordinance structure, they could learn the geography of the jurisdiction, they could assist us with low-level calls. So there are a number, they would learn radio procedures and those sorts of things. So there are positive outcomes for hiring the potential candidate as a community service officer in a temporary status. That's about it as far as our current situation. Like I said, you know, we have one vacancy now. It's possible we could have between two and four by the, before the end of the year, and I believe this may be the first year, the beginning of a kind of a generational shift, and I won't... I don't think it would be a surprise for me to tell you that I think the current climate is going to accelerate that process. And right now, in our organization, we have a, we have a void in the middle. We have, we have a lot of senior officers, we have a lot of one-to-five-year officers. There's a big gap in the middle because of the economic recession. We just didn't hire officers for a period of time. So when they start going at the top of the organization, they're going to go pretty fast. So there's going to be a major generational shift, I believe, in the organization in the next, I would say, three to five years maximum. Maybe, maybe forty percent of the department could be turned over in that period of time. And that's all I have, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Well, just say, thanks for the information. You answered two of my questions. I wanted to know if we could have a certified list of somebody that we didn't have to train to send out to get trained, so that's a good thing, I think, there. And I like the idea of if we do hire somebody that needs training, that we keep them, you know, employed and busy as a CSO and do some of the training you can do there until they can get in and get certified. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, Chief?
Yes, sir.
It sounds like we might be headed for a shortage of police officers on staff. Are there plans or we're in the process of making plans on how to address that? Not in getting police officers, but just fielding what we have and using what we have? Are their plans starting to promulgate now?
Well, yeah, from a conceptual standpoint, yes. And one of the ways we would try to fill that void for a period of time, A, B, to look at the deployment models for our shifts. We may look at extended shift scheduling, so you can basically maximize the workforce over a longer period of time and have fewer shifts. So that's one thing. And then we could look at, you know, reorganizing the way we deploy as far as, you know, having, putting more workforce in at peak hours and fewer at hours that of the week and that we, or days and hours of the week that we don't have as much volume of call activity. There is a risk there, though, because you never know when you're going to have that serious situation, and oftentimes, when you're at the least amount of staff possible. So we don't, you know, we don't get really excessive in our staffing. Our minimum staffing models haven't changed in probably twenty-five years, essentially. I mean, we've modified here and there a little bit, but we've always come back to that baseline. So we run pretty lean as it is. So our, my best bet would be that we would be looking at trying to extend the shift cycles, honestly, and having fewer platoons.
Yeah, you know what? And I appreciate that, because I just remember back in 2010, you know, Chief Shire was asking for more police, and we, we didn't, you know, we didn't, we couldn't afford it at that time, and I don't think we've really have increased our manpower at all regarding the police on patrol. So it is a kind of a worrisome time coming at us.
Right. Just, you know, you give a little bit of history on that. So back in 2009, the police department's authorized end strength was forty-five officers. Currently, in 2021, our authorized end strength is forty-one sworn officers, and if you will recall, I believe in the last eighteen months or twenty-four months, we did go from forty to forty-one, and that was specifically to assign an officer to a narcotics task force. So that officer really isn't even in the building. He's working with a regional task force, and that's the only way we really could have staffed that position. And then, obviously, we have the school resource officer at the high school, and honestly, the superintendent has proposed us about wanting to have an initial officer in the school as well, but I'm reluctant to do that with our current staff levels, based on the fact that I want to have the minimum amount of officers available to respond to public safety calls. So we are very lean. Yes, I agree.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Anybody else? If you're online, have any questions? Okay. Thanks, Chief. Thanks for keeping us updated on that, and hopefully, the Board of Fire Commissioners, do they have an idea when they're going to make a ruling or whatever on that certified officer?
So I think you're asking about the secondary list. There, we're going to discuss it again. We've already discussed it during their March meeting, and actually, I think we started talking about it in February, and then we... it in February, and then we continued in March. So, they are going to make a determination as to whether or not they want to pursue it. And I believe they are going to. They seem amenable to it. And at that point, they are going to ask the General Counsel to write a revision into the Board of Fire and Police Commission rules, so we can get the ball rolling on that. Even if they do it next month, and it takes a month for us to get the revisions into the Board of Fire and Police Commission rules, it'll probably be several months before we can get a list stood up. We'd have to go through a testing process. We'd have to advertise, obviously. So, we're probably talking about between ninety and one hundred and twenty days before we can get a list established. And I think that's probably an aggressive estimated timeline.
But I think that may also help us, too, move into the future if all of a sudden we get to the end of a year and we got four or five people that decide to leave.
Yeah. So, we do have another ability to acquire certified officers on our conventional list, too. Statute allows us to basically jump to certified candidates. And the way that happens in our organic list is, or conventional list, is that somebody who tests with us and doesn't have a certification during the time they're on our list, they get certified by another agency. So, we've had some success with that in the past. But just this go-around, we've been trying to replace this officer position since January, and none of our certified candidates who have been certified since the test occurred in 2019 want to leave their current organization to come to us, like I said, because of fear of losing out on what they have and then potentially losing out on what they may be coming to based on economic circumstances. And if you'll recall, we just recently extended the list up to a year because we had a pretty good volume on the list. But now that we're, now we're finding we're really churning through it pretty quickly.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We'll move on now to item number seven, which is a discussion on outdoor dining on North River Street and Water Street. Laura, you want to start?
Sure. Up until a few days ago, it seemed like we were approaching some warmer weather where we could have hopes of being able to dine outdoors again soon. The last few days, it hasn't seemed like that. But it seemed like good timing for us to bring this conversation back to City Council. As you know, last year, we created two outdoor public dining areas, one on North River Street and then another one on South Water Street. And last fall, City Council made the decision to apply to IDOT for a permit to make North River Street one-way southbound. That application has been pending, and we currently have received some comments back from IDOT. Those comments are very numerous, and they are also suggesting that we put a right-in, right-out at the head of, at the Wilson Street side of North River Street, which is kind of a surprise to us. And so, we have to process a response to all of the comments that they have made. And that's going to take some time for us to put that together. And then, again, it's going to take some time for IDOT to get back to us with a response to that. Alderman, Wolf?
I guess my question would be, if we want to make it one-way, why would we do a right-in, right-out?
That's the same question that we have, I believe, correct?
I think it's about the same question we have.
Yeah.
If no one can make a right-in, it seems like unnecessary to have a right-in.
I know. I really wish we could just, like, invite IDOT to come up here and sit with us for one committee meeting, and we could be done with this, and they could say yes or no at the end of the meeting. Because it seems like every time we go to IDOT, and unfortunately, because of where this intersection is at, it falls under their purview, which just drives me nuts, because it's such a simple change to enact. I mean, it doesn't require really moving anything or really changing but a few different signs is all we would have to do.
And as you recall, we did change it to a one-way at a certain point last year. They're a lot more permissive with temporary closures than they are with permanent changes.
What about temporary till November 1st?
Right. I know. So, today, we wanted to have a discussion with you about what you would like to see in the meantime. Would you like us to do the closure such as we did last year? Or would you prefer something else?
I still feel like the one-way is a much better thing, especially moving forward into the future, because, at least as of right now, one-way still provides traffic flow through there. So, if somebody needs to be dropped off or picked up, that's easy to do on a one-way situation. And then, the traffic patterns will develop from that one-way street. And it also gives us the ability to keep that, at least for now, until construction begins over there, keep that side of the street set up for dining outside, to be able to maximize the ability of businesses over there to use that space outside. I don't know that closing the street down, again, completely for that one block, really makes that big a difference for the ability of those businesses to shut that, you know, to have that street for additional seating.
I'd like to pipe in.
Go ahead, Nick.
First thing, to back up a bit, I guess I would recommend we even fight for jurisdiction, because I don't even see where this, I think we have an argument that this does not fall under IDOT's purview, even though it touches one corner. I think we should look into that. Secondly, in this environment with COVID and, you know, coming out of it, everything is in limbo. And I hate the status of limbo and not getting clear answers or whatnot. I would be a proponent that we do what we asked them for permission to do. And that would be close it with a one-way, do it the way we want to do, and ask for forgiveness if it's trouble. I don't see how it would be. I think we're, it's like they don't even want to touch it. So, why don't we just take control and do, and give some direction to the businesses on River Street, so they know, hey, April 1st, this is what we're going to do. If things change, things change. But the way, you know, it takes nine months to get a response out of them anyways. If they respond in nine months that, no, shame on you, you shouldn't have done that, then, well, that's next December. Who cares? I know that's not the proper political approach, but it's, I still question whether or not we should have complete control over what happens on that street versus IDOT anyways. But that's my opinion.
I would be happy to approach the city attorney and have them render a legal opinion as to IDOT's jurisdiction over that intersection. One of the things that I would caution about taking control over the situation in the event that it is IDOT's jurisdiction is that we rely on them for a lot more than just road closures. You know, they, we have the Main Street project and the Prairie Street project, where our plans are submitted to them and require their approval. And there's millions of dollars at play in terms of us having access to funding to do those road reconstructions. So, we just have to be kind of careful there choosing our battles.
I understand, and I agree with you, and I am appreciative of that. But when you can't get responses, it's hard to plan and make decisions. And we can do it in a way, you know, maybe I'm saying it not in the proper way, but we can do it in a way that's a little more amenable and appropriate.
I think it's important to build a collaborative and relationship with them. The Road Diet is another project on which they're going to have a great deal of, you know, that's not something that they do quite often. And so, we really are going to count on being able to bring them on board to help us to bring that to the...
And we have had a response from them, right? You have a letter or something that has questions in it that we have to respond to. I think at that point, too, I think Nick brings up a great point here, that the businesses need to know what's going on. They don't need to wait until the last second, the last minute, to try to figure out, okay, I need ten more tables, I need two more servers, whatever they need to be able to handle the extra outdoor space or the traffic pattern change. So, I think it's important that whatever answers, we have to get back to IDOT. Staff has to get that done and get that back to them. But also, impress upon IDOT that we need a response as soon as possible to give our businesses time to be able to work with this. Whatever's going to happen there, we need to be able to have time to let our businesses prepare for whatever's going to change on that street. So, it's imperative that we find that out from them as soon as they can. If that means they're just going to say no or yes or whatever, we need an answer back as soon as we can get it. Gary, I see you waving your hand back there.
Yeah. I mean, I go through the permit section. The permit section has to go to intersections. They have to go to arterials. They have to go to construction. They go to half dozen different bureaus. So, the guy that I deal with at permit section never is able to tell me how those other bureaus, how long they're going to take. That's just the way the function is at IDOT. I don't have, I don't have a link of communication to the person in the arterial section who does the review. It's not even, not even a person I'm tuned in with. And if IDOT is anything like our community development, right now, the permits are just flowing in.
Yeah.
The economy is picking up. So, my guess, and I, this is the reason why we applied for the temporary closure permit, was in this event. And my guess is, we will not see a southbound one-way approval until mid to late summer.
For the permanent.
So, Gary?
For a permanent one. So, do you think we'd get an approval if we ask for a temporary one till November 1st, or we're not going to see that either?
No.
Is there, is there any, is there anybody down there that we can?
Well, yeah, you guys can go.
Right. And maybe that's what we need, is we need a list of somebody down there or some people down there that we can contact.
That goes to Laura's point, though. You've got to choose which one you want to put your political capital on.
Right. And I don't want to make anybody mad, because there's too much money and there's too many other projects out there that we need approvals on to have it, you know, have a problem with this. But I also don't want to see us make a mistake and get IDOT mad at us, because we just decided to go ahead and do what we want to do out there. I don't think we're going to win the battle of we should be able to do whatever we want with River Street, because it is connected to a state route. No matter what we say or what we like, we still have to play by their rules at that intersection.
Part of the reason for applying for the temporary closure permit was to be able to provide certainty to what's going on? I mean, there really are two options Council can consider tonight. Close it like we did in 2020, or operate like we did in the years nineteen through 2010, going backwards in time, where we only closed it for special events.
But we still have to get a permit for the special events, correct?
We do. But getting a special event permit always has been fairly easy, because it's, you know, we're closing at April 14th, we're closing at April 26th, we're closing at May 13th. You know, that's, those are random dates, and IDOT has always turned those around quickly.
Alan, so Gary, we deal with a lot of engineering firms, and we don't want to, we just don't want to move forward and do something wrong, because IDOT has to follow certain specific rules and regulations. And so, we want to comply with those rules and regulations. But we do know, we do deal with a lot of engineering firms that design our roads, and they deal intimately with IDOT engineers, people in their various divisions. Can we speak to one of those engineering firms we have a good relationship with? Maybe they know someone that they can say, hey, can we get a time schedule on, can we get something on the schedule for this, so we at least know where we're going, as opposed to just sitting here saying, well, when IDOT gets to us, that, you know, and I understand, we got to comply with their rules and regs, but maybe we have somebody who knows somebody that they can at least give us some indication.
I think if you want to go to somebody who knows somebody around, it needs to come from City Council or the mayor. Because I don't think at the engineer or the staff level, this is the frustration we always have, is at the staff level, you are not going to get those types of guarantees. You're just not.
Right. Because it's got to be somebody above the staff level that says to them, this has to be done by March 31st, or this has to be done by April 15th. There's somebody else that's going to make that determination. And that's kind of what I want to know, is who do we need to talk to, or who do we have to have the mayor talk to, to try to get something, you know, back from them, so we get an answer. Because I don't want the businesses to think, you know, they're not going to get an answer on this.
Yeah. We're dragging our feet again.
Yeah. And, you know, I have envisioned that the fact that we applied for that earlier or early on, that we would get a response back, and we've got nothing, you know, other than you've got a couple of questions that they've asked, which to me, some of the...
Unfortunately, it's a lot what they've asked. And it's going to take some time to get, to work through all that in order to just get a response back to them.
So, to Alan's point, do we have somebody to try to let it to?
We do. We have an engineer who worked with us to update the traffic impact study and the intersection study. That was the package that we gave to IDOT to begin with.
The mayor has attempted on several occasions to talk to people at IDOT. And the issue we have at IDOT at the moment is, is that the current governor of Illinois, from the day he is elected, has never appointed a permanent director of IDOT. We have an acting director. And he doesn't really feel like he has a lot of power to make a lot of decisions that are expandable or whatever. He's real close to, and I can understand the position he's in. And nobody's yet been able to quite figure out why we can't get ourselves a full-time appointed professional head of IDOT in Illinois. It's a great job, but we don't seem to get that done. So, this thing is kind of a catchy-catchy-can deal here, where all we can do is kind of follow what we can do and what we can't do. And, you know, we're, Alan hit it right on the head, you know. Can't we find somebody we can talk to? And, you know, there's nobody in IDOT that wants to step up and make some decisions that somebody else could say, well, gee, why didn't I do that, or whatever. There's, there's nobody there that's got, seemingly feels like they have that power. So, we're in a kind of a unique moment here, and hopefully that will go away at some point in time. But right now, we're just kind of swinging in the breeze out here with this thing.
Alan?
Okay. One second, Marty. Keenan's next.
Now, I wanted to ask, what, in the meantime, while we're trying to figure out who we can talk to, what kind of options gets us what we want on that street? Like, we talked about last year, not having the big orange signs and trying to clear up some of the sightlines. Like, what options do we want as a council to provide businesses on that street and the community, so that when it does come time for us to make a decision on what we're going to do, or what IDOT says we can do, what can we have ready to roll out?
Well, I think we could take Nick's suggestion. We could, we could just go out there and move some pots around and put up a few signs, and it'd be done, and it'd be one-way south. I mean, that's the reality. We could do that probably, you know, our crew could probably have that done in a day.
Right.
But do we want to face the backlash from IDOT for doing something like that? I don't know.
Right now, if we had, like, three options, like, we could do that. If we hear nothing back and we decide that's what we want to do, if IDOT says possibly, like Gary says, here's what we think could happen, and we have two other ones, and then when they come back and say yes on this, no on that, we can then move all those things into place, so that we could at least tell businesses, this is what we got coming.
I guess my biggest thing is, I want us to be prepared and ready for the day that they start breaking ground on one Washington place.
That, too, yeah.
Because that's going to be the biggest issue on that street, is when that construction starts, I want us hopefully have, already have, a plan in place for one-way southbound, to make sure that that stays open. And then, the other part of the street gets used for, you know, construction safety barrier, whatever has to be there, and for, you know, use by whatever business wants to use it there, when we have outdoor dining there during the summers. But I think that that's something that, you know, I don't want us to wait, but I don't know how we can do this without waiting. I mean, that's, I work kind of stuck in this situation.
If I can, you know, my initial presentation, which is usually erroneous, you know, if we do it and present it to IDOT and say, here's what we've done, please let us know if this is the right way to do it, or if there's a better way to do it. And kowtow in that way, not necessarily kowtow, but we want their advice and direction, but we that way, not necessarily kowtow, but we want their advice and direction, but we can't wait nine more months for the response to our questions, which is going to take a month. I mean, we can do this in a way that's not, you know, getting them mad at us that we're risking other projects, but asking in a legitimate fashion that, hey, we want to do this right, here's what we've done, you know, guide us. We probably still won't hear anything for nine, for nine months, but at least we can tell the business, we can take action. To sit back and wait and not do anything and sit in limbo is, is killing our businesses on River Street for planning and coming, especially, like you say, Alan, prior to One Washington. They're already scared and unsure. And we need to be the leaders and give them some direction and surety and, and work at their behalf.
Marty?
Yeah. I want to say just that. I don't know, understand this, that it is not kowtowing to them. They are a, apparently right now, a directorless, rudderless operation that I do not think owes us any.
You're so boring.
I am trying to be calm about this because I think it's utterly ridiculous that a public agency, we have to worry about them getting mad at us. They should be impartial in their adjudication of what their rules are. If we need to get in our state representatives to lobby us, lobby for us, then by all means, let's bring them in here so that we can impress upon them that what Nick said is absolutely true. I'm not concerned about going to battle with them on this issue because for me, it is a huge capital. It's setting the precedent to our business owners that, look, we have One North Washington coming up ahead, and we're going to fight with you on every single bit of the way. Because two years of construction that they're going to have to deal with, this may be their last year to have a successful buildup and some reserves for them. And we owe it to them to say, we're going to fight for you right now, by any means necessary, to do such, to do just that. And I think it is just as important as Main Street. I think it is just as important as a whole bunch of other projects that we have, because these are our businesses that we represent to make sure that they are here in nine months. Holding out for a little back and forth questions, it's just, for me, it's absurd. We have a pandemic, we have an economic emergency right now, and we need to be doing everything we can for our businesses down there.
And those are things that happen at the political level, so by any means necessary, I would not.
And I'm politically saying it right now, that's what I think. And however we need to do it, however we need to do it, is just that. If we need to get in our representatives to bring them to our meeting, to ask them, or go and talk to them, I think that's where the pressure needs to come from, is from us. I understand, you know, on the staff level, your hands are tied. But I'm saying, we need to fight this as much as we can for our businesses.
Maybe we could take a different tact to this. Maybe we could do it by the Pritzker playbook and just have the mayor do an executive order to close that block down, to make it one-way until IDOT makes a ruling. It's a thought. That'd be the simplest way. Yeah, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Jeff, but that's, that'd probably be the easiest way to do it.
I don't think you can use an executive order to expand the scope of your jurisdiction.
Tell that to Max Field.
Well, let's not do that. Why don't we take a vote to direct staff to make it one-way? And we'll take the political backlash and wrist slapping if it comes. I don't even think it would. I think they would communicate with us, say, no, here's the right way to do it. But I think it's the right way to move forward.
Gary, you might be able to answer this for me. Do we have a representative from, are we in District One?
Local Roads.
From, from IDOT?
Yeah, Local Roads, yeah.
Okay. Maybe that's who we should contact first and say, you know, we just can't wait for you to finalize your, your order on this. We want our businesses to know what's going to go on before the summer hits. So we need to know, if we stay within what we wanted to do on this, can you come back and direct us through your process, whatever that is, review-wise, so that way we can get this done?
The response is going to be, go contact permits. Because Local Roads doesn't deal with any of this. Local Roads deals with the administration, the MFT, and the FAU.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're still back where we started tonight.
No, I think we're coming to an agreement. I think we need to make the decision and ask for their guidance. And we'll, we'll hear a response, but in the meantime, we'll do what we think is best and safest for, for our community and ask for their input. I mean, how, what can they, I, I, I'm not that concerned about the backlash because I think it's the right thing to do.
I think asking for their input is probably futile. I think that what they'll say is follow the process, the appropriate process for acquiring the legal permit in order to do this. So if you're directing staff not to follow that process, that, you know, it will just be outside of IDOT's jurisdiction and the consequences will be what the consequences will be.
No, I would direct staff to follow the process, but in the meantime, make the street one-way.
But that's not following the process. So the process is apply, wait until the permit is received, and then do what the permit says.
Hey, Alan. Hey, Gary, just a quick question. I mean, is, is there a possibility that we say hire an expediter?
I honestly don't know because I'm not, I'm not in the day-to-day dealings on of IDOT, whether they have an expediter up there or not. I've never heard of such a thing.
Like in construction, you know, you want to get permits through, in the city of Chicago, you hire an expedite in the company, and they come in, they get the permit right away. So you're not waiting six weeks, six months.
Yeah, you've got to know somebody who knows somebody. And that, that kind of goes back to, I think, what we're talking about. I don't think anyone who knows of somebody's probably not at the staff level.
I believe also all the expeditors are currently under indictment in the state of Illinois.
I don't know that we want to go there.
Well, to, kind of, to Mike's point, I know that, what he's saying, but on some level, this is why this state is like the way it is. Too many people believe they have their own little kingdoms, that they cannot listen and try to work with people on this stuff. And that if we're worried about upsetting them, that in itself is just stomach churning, that we have to kowtow to people when all we're trying to do is find solutions that protect businesses in one of the most unprecedented times in our, in our nation's history.
So what would be the next best play, then? Is it to get meetings one-on-one with Karina and Mara and anyone else, and explain to them our situation while we advise the plan? Or implement the plan and tell them about it?
I think it's a good idea to do that because I think any, any kind of pressure, any kind of political, I guess, political pressure we can apply to the department to try to get this done should help us. Or at least, it's better than just saying, well, we're not going to do anything, or we're just going to wait for the permit to come through. Or if we try different avenues, maybe one of them will get through.
Alan, Scott here.
Go ahead, Scott.
From my experience, I think, I think, you know, when I've dealt with IDOT before, the best way to deal with them when you really can't get something done is to go the political route. Get with your state legislature, legislators, and explain the situation, have them advocate for you. Because I know that that's helped in other jurisdictions I've worked in before that, you know, if you can engage Karina and Ugasdi and the others that are in the, in our district, I think that's usually your best bet.
Okay. Nick, you're muted.
Hello. I need a question because I, I pull up the map of Batavia, and Route 25 is highlighted. Not at any moment in time does it touch River Street. So I just want to know, were we just being proactive and being nice at first and saying, hey, let's run this by IDOT? Or was there ever a time where they said, no, we have jurisdiction over that?
From the day I got on the city council, they've had jurisdiction over it, Nick.
Because we were told that by our staff. Was there anyone at IDOT that clarified that?
IDOT stood in these chambers and told us that when we were talking about straightening the jog out, that that intersection, both up at Washington Avenue and at River Street, all legs of that are controlled by them because it touches an intersection at a state route. And that's the thing, we can't even change the timing on the lights. You know, that, that's a whole nother crazy process that takes, you know, 18 months or something to even get a review to change the timing on the lights because it's controlled by IDOT.
But the lights actually do control the traffic on state route. That makes sense. It, I'm with Nick, that it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense.
It doesn't touch. It actually doesn't touch. If there wasn't, if there were lights, obviously, they would have to have, because it will affect several intersections. But I don't know. I just, this is frustrating.
Well, it is frustrating. And, you know, the thing is, is I don't know that we're going to change IDOT's mind on that. So I think we have to figure out how.
I don't, what I'm saying is, I don't want to make the assumption that we know what IDOT's mind is. I mean, obviously, they said that in regards to lights 18 years ago or whenever. But that's why I'm saying, if we present this to them and say, hey, we're doing this one-way, like, it kind of touches us. What do you guys think? We want to do everything right. Hey, we're, we're part of the family. At that point, we'll get a response. But in the meantime, we can tell our businesses, hey, at this point, we're going one-way and at least give some direction. And we might get a faster response. If it does tick them off, we'll get a faster response. If it doesn't, it doesn't.
So I guess, I guess maybe, Nick, I've already done that. I mean, now that I hear you explain it out and what you would link step-by-step, literally the morning after a council gave staff direction to go to one-way, I sent off a letter to the, or an email to the guy at IDOT, the permits guy, and said, the city wants to do this one-way, here's a drawing, you know, can we just go ahead and do this? And his response was, no, we need an update to the traffic intersection study, we need this traffic count updated. That was the packet then that we had to put together in order to make this a middle. So I don't know if that really, I mean, I, maybe I've already done what you're saying and that we've already asked permission, giving them a drawing, and they said, no, here's the process you have to go through.
Could you send us the permitting guy's email?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then Abby, because I think you have some contact with them. Do you want to set up meetings, maybe you and Laura, with our reps to try to get that side of it going?
Yeah, I'm happy to. Except that, I mean, I don't know if this matters. I'm not actually in Karina or Mara's district.
No, that, that doesn't really matter. You know, if we're acting as representatives of the city of Batavia as a whole.
Okay. Yeah, happy to.
And I think that that's something we should get going. I don't think we should take, take a one-pronged approach to this. I think we should try and go at every, every route we can to get there and see what we can do to, to make that happen.
Abby?
Yes, sir.
If you can contact Tammy over there, her chief of staff, I've already been in touch with her previously on this, so she'll know exactly.
Okay, perfect.
Go ahead, Keenan.
In the meantime, can we figure out what we want to do with the one-way? Like, how, where do we want to put things so we can tell the business owners and them?
Soon as we get approval, this is what we're going to do.
Yeah, so they can start planning.
I think that's true.
Sure. Yes, I could, we could say right now, it would be our intent to move some of the heavy, you know, street, I'm going to call it furniture, out there, like planters and benches and such. Those would be moved along those white brick lanes to act as positive protection for the tables that would be set up between the white line and the buildings in the empty spaces. And the city has either already acquired, or at least has ordered, 16 of the barco tables and umbrellas to be arranged in those, I'll call them the sidewalk spaces adjacent to the center lane.
And then the center lane we're going to keep is what, 16 feet or something we have to keep open?
15.
15 feet for a fire truck?
Mm-hmm.
For access. And then also so that they can get in and get to the dumpsters?
On the alleyway.
On the alleyways that are there.
Correct.
Because I want to make sure that businesses know that that's one of the things we're going to be making sure stays open there. And access for deliveries and everything stays open because that's, I think, one of the big things that, you know, businesses need to know that we're going to make sure that that happens.
Another part of the context of all of this is that on the news yesterday, it said that at some point this week, that the governor is going to come out with, I'm going to call it Phase 4.5, that it is a little lessening of the restrictions from Phase 4. But because the Phase 5 requirements of a vaccine being widely available and there being an effective treatment preventing serious illness from COVID, since we're not quite there to that Phase 5 criteria, he's going to come up with some additional phase that is going to allow some more opening. And I'm thinking that that is going to increase the numbers of folks who are able to gather both inside and outside. So it might allow the adjacent businesses to resume a little bit more normal capacity inside their restaurants and bars.
Alan? Go ahead, Joe.
I got lost somewhere. We, we were talking about who was going to contact who, and the next thing we were talking about was where planners were going to be located on the street. Can we go back to who's contacting who and what we need to do there, please?
I think Abby Beck and Laura Newman were tasked with contacting Karina Villa and Mara Herschauer. And Gary was going to provide the name to city council, all of you aldermen of the person who was in charge of the permitting?
Yeah, my contact at permitting.
Yes.
Okay. And would it help for Tony and I, being that that's in the fourth ward, to also do the same tact, contacting those folks?
Yes.
Yeah, I think if 14 letters or 14 emails show up?
Yes.
All about the same item, I think that that may show some interest, or help them show some interest to it.
Alan, are there any business owners on the phone that might want to chime in, too?
I don't know if there's any on the phone. I know we have two here in the audience.
There are, there's a property owner and there are two business owners on attending, but none have their hand up. If you do wish to speak, feel free to put your hand up and I'll make sure to activate your microphone. Melissa Monna would like to make comment.
Okay. Melissa, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, cool. I, I guess I'll just speak on like what my experience was last year. And when the street closed down, there was literally nothing but the positive feedback from all the people who sat at those tables, where I would, I would almost have, I would almost think that like people who were coming downtown on River Street have the expectation of it being closed up in a very similar way this year. And they might be confused if, if it wasn't. I mean, I had people coming out this weekend on bicycles. It was like the first nice weekend where they thought they could just walk across the street with their beer and sit on like a bench or something because it, we had the environment planned for them last year. The, I did get an opportunity to talk to some of my neighbors at El Taco Grande, just concerning like how we used the street last year, if like some of the activities and programming that we held at formerly River's Edge, now Sidecar, was helpful to them. And they raved about it. There were nights their sales doubled because we always were having regular programming on Tuesday night for dinner with live music, Thursday night trivia filled the streets, and Sunday night, we were holding bluegrass. Sunday night we were holding bluegrass and families were out, kids running about, like one way is terrifying to think about when there's like kids running and playing and dogs and stuff like that. But, um, the, whatever we do, I mean, like I'm still going to plan on having that programming for the entire street available. So, and I know that Bar Evolution has live music nights that we'll, we can work together. We'll always keep it like packed and, uh, I just, we need to kind of know down here what's going to go on. I, I think that we can work around deliveries and anyone who needs to be dropped off at like Katrina's or anywhere during the daytime to, to just get this thing closed down. If the tables are going to be available soon, like literally every day that it's nice out and there are not tables there, like the restaurants are losing hundreds of dollars that will turn into thousands of dollars that will turn into that nest egg that we need to move forward. Yeah.
Melissa, this is Joe. I'd like to remind you that the reason we're looking for the one-way isn't so that we have one-way traffic during the summer, it's so that we as a city can close off the north end of River Street whenever and as often as we want without having to go through IDOT and wait weeks and months to get an approval. I see it being shut down through the summertime like we did last year, but the, the whole idea of that isn't so that we only have cars going one way with all the tables, it's so that we can control when the traffic gets shut down, not IDOT.
Right, right, right. I, I do, I do remember that. I just, I don't recall now, as we're waiting for that to happen, if there were, like, do we, would the city need to apply for a, like a full closure if they're not going to respond to this or we're just, we're now hoping that IDOT listens to us because we're going to move forward with a different means of trying to get in touch with them?
So we have a permit for the full closure. That was what we applied for on January 3rd or whatever it was because we kind of suspected this may happen, that IDOT generally doesn't give approvals in the first round. So we have that permit in place. We could, that permit became effective yesterday.
So we could close the street until IDOT makes their ruling?
We could.
And we can deal with the street as a closed street, just like we did all last summer?
Right.
Yep, that's what I said, yeah. So just like we did last summer, it would close exactly the same way.
Okay, I didn't realize we had that permit already there, so.
Neither.
I think that's probably the best.
Kind of a game changer.
That's probably the best fallback position then is just to close the street down until we get IDOT's decision on a one-way.
And that permit, by the way, was applied for January 3rd and we didn't get that until like March 7th or something, but we got it. So that's, that's, that's the most important part.
Okay.
If, if I could ask a question, Gary, do we have the ability, then obviously we can close it down, but can we open it up at the same time, like Monday through Thursday? You know, whenever hours we want, because there are some businesses that would like some deliveries or have access or, or whatnot. Because we can have it closed, do we have the ability to open and close it at our peril?
Now you're talking, I mean, I mean, I'm cringing myself from a staff perspective. I don't have full-time staff to go out there and drag barricades every other day.
I get it. I wouldn't be enjoying myself if I wasn't making you cringe.
Yeah, signage and, signage and cones. To be honest with you, alderman, if you're going to just do it on a temporary basis like that, we're going to handle it like we do with special events and not, and not, you know, stripe out the, the center median. And, I mean, we just, I mean, that's council's decision if you guys want to do that, but I frankly don't have the staff.
No, I, and I'm not, I'm just asking if, if the, the permit allows that. I'm not, I'm not advocating for one way or another. I just want to know what our abilities are in the event because there are, while this is an easy solution and I'm, I'm happy with it, I want to close all the time anyway, so that's what I would be advocating for, but there are some that want access and, and whatnot. So I, I'm just asking, I didn't know if, if we close it, are we locked in? It's shut down till whenever or do we have flexibility? So I, I'm not, don't, don't, don't panic. I just want to know what our, what our abilities are.
Yeah, the permit was written to be closed on a temporary basis from March, mid-March to, to really the first week in December. That was how the permit was submitted. That mirrors what we did in 2020.
Yeah, and, and as it was last year, Nick, we were able to get in for deliveries and other access at State Street.
Right.
So even though it was closed completely, it was still accessible through State Street, just simply moving the barricades back?
Perfect.
Would gain access to have deliveries and everything else in there.
Alan?
Go ahead.
Now that we know that we've got that permit in hand, can we start this conversation all over again with the, with the premise of, we have that permit in hand, when do we want to close State, when do we want to close River Street since we don't have the one-way? I think that's now a more meaningful conversation than writing to all these people. That, that I think takes a little bit of the pressure off getting the one-way. When do we want to close this? What do the business owners think about that? As soon as we can? Or is there any reason why we wouldn't want to do that tomorrow?
The only reason would be that I can recall a few years where it has snowed on Easter. And so I was thinking possibly we might want to wait until after Easter weekend and do it the following week, but it's whatever you decide. It just makes it very difficult to clear snow when those tables are down.
They're not white tables or white umbrellas, are they?
No.
The tables are here, by the way, so our guys are, are going to be starting to putting them together. And I do apologize, I, I, I thought at the beginning, I did say that we had two options available to us, and that was close the road or.
I'll take the heat for that. I think that's my fault because I didn't think we had that permit to close it yet. I thought we were still waiting on that.
Yeah, I, I kind of anticipated it in January, so.
Alan?
Abby, go ahead.
I think, I think that, you know, settling into this full road closure though is, is backtracking on what the original conversation was, which was brought up by the business owners, that the, that the road closure signage last year was also problematic and they wanted, you know, we were approached, we were pursuing the one-way so that we would have a more visible, vibrant-looking street instead of having it look like a construction zone, especially if there is a construction zone right next door and sending that mixed message. So I fear jumping into, let's just close it and close it full-time, then we're, we're, and, and not applying the pressure on getting the one-way established, then we're just kind of, you know, wiping that slate clean and pretending that conversation didn't happen. I mean, is, and, but in the meantime, knowing we have that option, one question that I do have is, is on Water Street, last year, we had two Jersey barricades and two orange Type 3 barricades. Can we do that configuration this year on River Street?
It's just, it's narrower. That's why you're able to do that on Water Street. River Street is wider. That's why you need the three.
Did you hear that, Abby?
I did. I'm looking at the pictures and I'm trying to mentally measure because it, certain, like the big gaps in between the, in between the barricades on Water Street, it, yeah, maybe you're right, but.
Can some of that be narrowed with some planters?
Mm-hmm.
We had planters last year.
If we have planters there, can we do, get away with just two barricades there to block the lanes or not?
We had that discussion last year, too.
Discussion, yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I mean, I realize council does not like the orange barricades. You do not like the Jersey barriers? And this goes back to your discussion.
Well, I like the Jersey barricades. I think they're nice.
You all can, you all cannot like it, but that is what the rule is. And, and, and so you, if you want to change the rule, you're going to have to do it politically.
Yeah, and, and the thing is, is if we don't do that and somebody drives through it?
Yes.
Then we're in trouble. And that's a situation I don't want us to be in. One, I don't want to see anybody get hurt. And two, I don't want us to be on the wrong side of what the law is on the barricades. I mean, I know nobody likes that, but I think Melissa brought up a good point, that it happened so often last year and so many times when there were so many people out there that I think people are ready for that. And people know, hey, yeah, the barricade's up. That means we can sit out in the street and all this stuff happens all summer long. So I think, again, it's probably incumbent on us to figure out how we make that as inviting as possible. If it's, you know, six-foot-high open letters hanging off of the, um, the signs over there, something, you know, to make it light up that.
The lights, the lights did help a lot last year.
Yeah, and, and I think, again, too, being this is the second year of it, people expect that down there and people are going to expect that. I think that's something moving into the future, you know, with the parklets and stuff we did last night. People want to see that. They, you know, they want to experience that because I think a lot of people feel safer in that atmosphere as well. Like, there's still a lot of people that are really nervous about the possibility of still contracting COVID. So if they can sit outside and they can sit six feet away from everybody else or 10 feet away from everybody else, they feel okay about that. If it's only their family at a table, they feel good about that. They don't want to be inside a building, trapped in there for an hour, you know, enjoying their meal. That's not something that people want to do yet. So I think that this is really important, you know, and if we get approval to do the one-way, then I think, again, we'll be back here making the decision, do we want to really do that or do we want to leave the street closed? I think when we get to the construction season over there, when One Washington starts, we need to keep that road open. You know, I know that the, the restaurants and the bars and everything need the space to be able to be outside, but every other business over there also deserves to have customers, whether they drive by or dropped off or picked up, whatever. I think it has to be as level a playing field as we can for everything that's there. There's a couple of new businesses over there, you know, I, I don't know what's going to happen with other buildings that are unoccupied right now, but if we can keep things going down there and keep the interest up, keep the farmer's market over there, we can keep people over there.
Alan, I'd be interested to hear what the business people we got in the room say about it.
Yeah. Okay, I know Melissa's got her hand up one more, so while we're getting somebody up to the mic, Melissa, go ahead.
I think she may have just had it raised from before.
Left her hand up from before?
I totally did. I'm lowering my hand.
No problem, Melissa.
Hello, um, there we go. John Hamel from Evolution, Bar Evolution Downtown Batavia. First, I want to thank everybody for having such passion and et cetera for trying to make the street successful again from, from what happened with last year. So we appreciate that very much. On the, on the street closure for us, you know, I, I've come in here and spoken about options, and I know the southbound option is the one because it's easier to close off when you want to have events, if that's my understanding. I always thought that northbound would be a better solution because just traffic. As being down there for nine years, you know, the only time River Street South gets business is when there's an exit on Fabian Parkway. Otherwise, it's 25 and people kind of use that as a bypass. But if it's going to be a southbound, you know, closure, then if possible for the summer, like we've got the permit, I would, I would be for closing the street off completely. You know, Melissa is right, she programmed the heck out of the street with her trivia, which took up, you know, she was out onto the street, not just on the sidewalks. And if it's southbound, open during business during the summer, you're going to limit the ability, ability of people to be spread out because if Laura said you go out to the white brick, if that's the edge of it, you're only limited to tables that can sit right on the sidewalk, et cetera. So from our standpoint, my standpoint is, the more we can egress onto the street, the better. You know, I'll commit here also that if there's, you know, I'll go through the classes to move the ballards or the barriers so that there's someone who can do those on the street, not have to put the, the staff, you know, just the working staff. So I'm happy to do that. I, you know, I would hope, I don't know if there's any way, if you do, and I know you got the orange things, can you put ballards down on the, on the, on the 25 side if you close it off? Do you, if you make it more of a semi-permanent thing, like the things they've got right by the ramps going down to like Mary Claire's property, those ones on the side? Is that possible, put those in at the, at the intersection there and have it be closed off with those?
We just ballards?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we've, we've discussed ballards a thousand times. Ballards are not a, not a closure thing.
Okay, I was hoping maybe we could, thousand one, we'd make it work.
Yeah.
So I guess from this, you know, the lights last year, once we got them in, were, were exceptional. The trees are lit, they look nice, the ones that were on the, with the, you know, that were strung down, those helped, again, bring people down there. And I think everybody here has said the same thing. People are expecting River Street to be open again like it was last year. I can't tell how many people at the farmer's market enjoyed being able to come up and get a mimosa or something and walk the street. And I would bet you, the vendors, after a cocktail or two, had better sales anyway, so it worked out for them also. As far as the timeline, I agree with Laura that probably a little bit later because of the possibility of snow, you know, mid-April would probably be good. I know we're getting 60-degree days. I don't know if it's possible to do stuff on the sidewalk without the street being closed. I don't know what the laws are for that, but, you know, the, the annual crawl is scheduled for May 1st. It'd be nice if it was open for that. You know, well, I guess I've got people's attention too. I will go back to one thing. I know it's not on River Street per se, but when One Washington comes online, you know, anything that can be done to keep one lane going west on State Street, to bring egress down to the Tea Tree, down to Tusk, would be helpful. I, I've, I've brought that up just because I've got a microphone and I can do it for a second, but that also ties into River Street too, is it's the, you know, traffic patterns. I don't know the benefit of having, having egress coming from the next street north, I can't remember the name of it off the top of my head, but Spring Street. You know, people are, people are creatures of habit and they're, they're typically lazy. So if someone has to go an extra block, they're going to go an extra block. So I implore the group, when you're working with the developer for One Washington, if there's any way that they can, you know, take out the sidewalk or leave the sidewalk, leave one lane, take out the little, the little thing that goes out on the street where there's a planter, pull that out and have one lane so that people can go to those businesses, I think would be helpful, so. Thank you. Any questions for me, I should say? Thank you.
Hi, guys. Missy Hartman from the Tea Tree. I think mine's a little bit different. I'm not open at night. I'm open during the day. With the closure of the street last year, I had no problems with it. We had State Street open then at that time. If One Washington does come in, I do need to kind of figure out how I'm going to get the daytime traffic down there, whether it be the one road that's, or the one side of the road that's open. I'm fine with the road that you're proposing. For me, I think it would help me because everybody can turn onto that street. Like you said, if they have to go a couple streets down to Spring, that's going to impact me because then they have to make a big loop around. But as far as the closure, I loved it. I loved the lights. We saw some, we're not open in the evening unless it's like 7:00 PM, but I enjoyed the ambiance of the street once it got to that point. And I know that watching all the deliveries, there wasn't a lot of problems with that at all. They got used to it and my, my business did fine. So I would encourage the, the street being closed again. I really enjoyed seeing all of that happening for the evening time bars and restaurants and my, my business was just fine, so I do encourage it. Any questions for me during, I'm probably one of the only daytime businesses on that road now, but I, I do enjoy the, the road being closed.
Thank you. So I think for now, we just need, if we're going to, until we get an approval from IDOT, I think we're going to, it sounds like everybody's okay with closing the street down because we have a permit for that. And we just need to pick a date when we want to do that. Do we want to wait till 1st of April? No, that's a great date.
I'd say, you know, second or third week in April, just to get past Easter.
The first weekend of April then, or?
First weekend in April is Easter.
Okay.
So.
So sometime the week of April 8th?
5th, you mean? It is still winter.
To have it in place for.
It is still winter. Well, it's spring, March 30th, March 22nd is the beginning of spring.
What date did we close it last?
It wasn't until June because.
Until June.
No, we should do it mid-April for sure.
Came online then.
Then, okay.
We either could, I mean, we could do it anytime, but, but the week, the week of April 5th, which is a Monday, or the week of April 12th, which is another Monday, one of those two weeks, you guys can just tell us which one of those.
Okay, real, real quick, Melissa, you still there?
Yeah.
Because I know you have the most programming down on the street there, the use of the street. When do you plan on starting your schedule?
Um, hi, can you hear me again?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. I, I missed.
I I missed the first part of your question, you but you you were generally asking me when our.
Yeah, when you were going to start your programming out on the street.
I mean, it's completely weather dependent. I'm running trivia inside, which can very easily move outside, so that's already going on every Thursday.
Okay.
Um, and I have um at least a duo or trio of bluegrass players that will come any any Sunday, like starting probably this week, like that it's nice enough to be outside. And I mean, I can talk to someone about popping a fence up or something like so that I have like a barricade just to do that before the street's closed, but that's not, you know, not here or there right now. But I'm I'm ready to go. I have uh Sunday and Thursday locked in, ready and yeah.
And why don't we plan on that? You know, the April 1st is the Thursday. Do you want to plan on April 8th then?
Yeah, well, my my crew, I'm going to tell my crews like the start of, I'm going to tell my crews the week of April 5th.
Yeah.
Okay, so that week you'll get it, get it closed?
Unless it's raining all week and then we're going to.
Right, and and that's, that's totally acceptable.
And lights also, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we're, we'll do the tables and the lights and all the things that really we learned.
Were there last year.
Last year.
Okay, well, I think that's good because then that also gives businesses a couple of weeks to get ready and decide what they want to do. And, you know, it, we can get notice out to the public so that they know that that's what's going to happen there. And that way, we plan on that. And then depending on what I dot says, we'll make a decision on where we go from there.
Mm hmm.
And this way, at least it gives certainty to the businesses that, okay, you're going to have to tell your delivery crew, they have to deliver because of the barricades are up there, you know, and and all that can be put into place. And then things can start to happen down there. Give the public some advanced notice that we're ramping up for summer in the streets.
Can we put that in our newsletter and on the website as well? When it's going to.
Yeah.
Open for sure.
Absolutely. And then also share with, I I know that Beth Walker is online tonight also. We'll make sure that Main Street and the Chamber also put that out in their weekly updates that they put out as well.
All right, that sounds great.
We may want to, like, because we're still a few weeks out, we may want to say, you know, keep your eyes open early April.
Yeah.
Road is, just keep it kind of more vague right now and then.
Yeah.
Keep it flexible.
Weather forecast, then we can.
Yeah, weather permitting, it's going to be out there.
April can be a volatile month.
And I know that you've had discussions, Laura, with Main Street and Chamber and everything for Farmer's Market.
Mm hmm.
Have we gotten to a point where we're deciding how we're going to have that function on River Street?
We needed to have this discussion first.
And then then we can finalize, okay. Because I just want to make sure that I think it's really, really important for the farmer's market that it stay over there even through the construction. You know, if that means we go further north or into the parking lot or however, we have to make it function over there, that we make it function there because that draws thousands of people down there every weekend. But those businesses need to survive.
Mm hmm.
And, you know, what happens during the week makes them thrive, but what happens in the weekend, make sure that they can pay all their bills.
And then.
Either way.
The the dates would be the same for South Water Street as well. Um, a group of property owners and business owners over there met uh this past week. And we're talking about um trying to collaborate with one another to do more programming over there as well so that um they can increase the the traffic flow over there. But uh one of the things they said was they wanted to be very sensitive about the timing of when events were going on over on North River Street too, so that it was complimentary and not kind of in competition with things that would be going on at the same time. And I know that Main Street is working on organizing a similar meeting for uh North River Street as well. Um, also over on the South Water Street, um as part of the discussion, um I asked if the city um could step in to do the lighting. Last year, there was um one of the property owners arranged for and paid for the catenary lighting that was over in that area. Um, over there, it's a lot easier. The city has assets that it can attach the catenary lighting to. But just um to make sure that it gets attached to our assets in the right way and in case something happens, that we would follow up with our contractor to correct that. Or either that or we're just buying the lights and putting them up. I thought it would be better for the city to be uh the one providing the lights in that area, just as we are on North River Street with our project to get the catenary lights um put there as well.
I want a quick comment, please?
Mm hmm.
So I just want to reinforce the, you know, on River Street, some some comments I I've heard tonight is that, you know, the whole purpose of the Woonorf on River Street is that it is a shared street. So when it is open to traffic, everyone needs to understand the automobile does not own the center of the road. I mean, if you're walking down the street, you have every right to walk anywhere you want on that street. And when there's cars coming down, it's what, it's 15 miles an hour? That they share the road with you, that they're going to have to stop and wait for you to get out of the way. And it's just, our whole country is is, it's 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 automobile centric. That that, you know, just get out of the way of the moving vehicle. The Woonorf is not that. River Street is not that. So I just want to confirm that and reinforce that with people. So and we should continue to reinforce that with the city. So when people run River Street, they should be safe when they're walking down the street. If it's on the street, inside the white lines or outside the white lines. Just want to keep reinforcing that.
The the biggest thing is everybody has to be aware.
Yes.
And basically you have to yield to anything in front of you.
And we have signs up that says it's a shared street and 15 miles an hour, so. And if there's, you know, people not in compliance, then that's an enforcement issue.
Mm hmm.
Okay, does anybody else have anything on this tonight? Anybody else online?
Gary, no hands up.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody, for a really good discussion tonight. I'm glad that I listened to Gary, I guess halfway through the meeting, finally, that we actually have a permit for over there and I was wrong that we didn't have one. But this gets us going and it also gives the businesses some certainty of when this is going to happen and what to plan for. So I think that's really good. And then we'll deal with I dot however we can, try to make things happen, try to develop better channels through I dot to figure out, hey, in the future, what can we do? Who can we contact to, you know, have a better relationship with them? Because I think that benefits all of us.
Exactly.
If, you know, we know what we have to do and how we have to get things in and who we need to talk to when we send stuff in, it might actually help both of us get our jobs done.
Yes.
And anything we can do to expedite that is good.
Absolutely.
All right, then we will move on to item number eight, which is project status. Laura, do you have anything different from last night?
You know what? I just have a couple of things to add. I know we've talked about it a lot, but I think it's important for everybody to know that this um mass vaccination site is going into the former Sam's Club at 501 North Randall Road. And that will be opening up as of this Friday. Um, they did say by midweek that people should be able to go to the King County Health Department website and um find the, they they'll set up a system for people to be um setting up their appointments. Right now, initially, I think what they're doing on Friday is handling uh second doses for people who had received first doses up at the uh King County Fairgrounds. Um, but uh just wanted to let people know that that was coming. And then also tomorrow afternoon, we have another meeting with uh the Park District and Hitchcock Design Group. Uh, our first working group meeting on the project to create the Fox River Master Plan. That's it, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Laura? Yeah, I've actually already heard, I've already heard from a couple of people that actually have appointments scheduled for Friday.
Yes, yeah, me too today.
It's up and running.
It sure is. Alderman Callahan?
It was brought up at the last meeting about the financing for One North Washington. What's the timeline for when that has to be secured?
Um, there, I think that Scott Buing is on the line, but um he's got the timeline tacked up above his desk. And I want to say that it is sometime in mid to late April that um the developer is required to have completed their bid drawings.
Right, yeah, I don't have the exact date in front of me. I'm not actually in my office right now, but uh it's 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 like mid to late April that they're supposed to have the bid drawings completed.
Mm hmm.
And then there's another step beyond that, which is July 15th or so that uh is the next step about um financing has to be fully locked in and everything else.
Hey, Scott, can you get that out to all the council members, please?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, does anybody else have any others tonight? Okay, that was easy. All right, and uh.
I move we uh dismiss.
All right. Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the lights are already going off. All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Oh, Abby's already gone.